I'm going to call this meeting the School Committee to Order. I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successfully engaged, lifelong learners. And I'll ask you to join me in the school. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee, this is your opportunity.
Thank you.
If you have, just identify yourself and if you have a written statement, if you could give it to our secretary at the end.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Kateri Grammas and I'm a student in eighth grade and a student in fifth grade. I'm here with questions regarding Essex Technical High School. I have learned that until very recently Melissa was the representative. And if that role is still your position, then I guess this is...
Melissa's not here.
Melissa's not here. She's gone to the lake.
Oh, okay.
So she has sought to renew her resignation.
So we came here today because I wasn't sure who then to address with these questions until somebody, since another appointee has...
She's going to stay on until August.
Oh, okay. She's still the contact?
She still is the contact.
Okay. So I can read these and then I'll leave them for her.
Yeah, and if you, and if she doesn't show up by the time you finish them, I would suggest you email to her also. Our email addresses are under the school website, Mr. Dunn and the school committee.
Wonderful. Okay. All right, great. So I'll just read my quick questions. How would the number of seats allotted to Gloucester students decide? Has the formula changed over the years and if so, why? Why is it the policy that a seat vacated by a Gloucester student who is accepted but ultimately decides not to attend given to the next student on the waitlist as determined by numerical rank and not given to the next student from Gloucester on the waitlist? And my final question is, can families be told where their student is on the waitlist? If not, why? And please provide the specific policy that addresses this issue.
Unfortunately, we don't know the answer to any of those questions.
The tech questions, we'll give those answers for you.
Great, I would appreciate it.
She may, I mean, it's not called a tech anymore, what do we call it? They have their own school committee for, and so their whole meeting's very much like this. And whereas Melissa's the only one here who might have the answers, I would imagine that either the school committee for the tech or the administration for tech may be able to also answer those questions.
And I have reached out to them, I just haven't received a reply. Also, my mother, who's a retired teacher and is familiar more with the school committee going on, has reached out to her and not received a reply.
She's getting married, like, next week. Yeah. So she's pretty far. But she will...
The end of the year is coming, so I just am not sure if this is work that goes on throughout the summer or if it ends when kids are out of school. Does anyone have an answer?
What, their meetings? Whether their meetings go on?
Yes.
I don't know.
Don't know. Okay. That's why I wanted to come here tonight, in case they didn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Well, we will mention it to Melissa and she will follow up on the answer.
Those are very good questions. I look forward to the answers myself.
Yeah. Right. Recommissions. It seems it's been, I think, almost five weeks since we had a meeting. It goes way back. Beeman, the, was divorced, which I attended, which was...
I did too, it was delightful.
It was delightful. Veterans had the School of Rock, School House Rock, which I attended, which was very, very good. What else we've had was...
O'Malley had its band and chorus concert.
And the middle school and high school, of course, both performed at the Universalist Church a few Sundays ago, but it was absolutely just beautiful music, just beautiful.
The ROTC celebrated their awards night, I believe it was last week. And of course, we had both the academic extracurricular awards night at the high school, plus the scholarship night was this past Friday, and only to be outdone by graduation on a beautiful, beautiful Sunday, this past Sunday. And last, Patricius Clancy would like to talk about the girls softball team and their victory over Drake in the quarterfinals.
They're playing tonight.
They're playing, I think, in a half an hour.
Yeah.
In the semifinals in Lowell.
Correct.
I can remember the play.
Martin Field needs ball.
I'll hand over.
Yeah, but a great come-from-behind victory of four to one in the bottom of the seventh, and they tied it up and won it in the eighth. Very exciting, very exciting. And there's only one senior on the team, so they're doing really well.
Joel?
I'd like to recognize, especially at the graduation, everyone, including Dr. Sapphire and Sharon Pope, who spoke at the graduation ceremony. I think there were about five speeches, including the mayor and the student speeches, and each one was unique and each one was engaging, and there was very little repeat, there was very little overlap. It was really excellent to have five takes on the event. I think everyone in the crowd really enjoyed the variety also, so kudos to everyone who spoke that day.
And the weather was great.
Maybe that's made it enjoyable. Because if there'll be anything, I don't want to like to...
I have a quick recognition, it was from today, actually. I went to the Essex Shipbuilding Museum to see the eighth grade, one of the eighth grade houses shaping oars. They were planting and sanding down the oars. They were making pole pins, rope brahmitts. There were five teams going and two other teams were working on a north and a south boat, and these, I believe, were 22-foot long. I can't remember the exact name of them, but they are row boats and they row in dories. And I had some pictures that I can share for the next time, but the students were fully engaged in all the assembly. They were being taught by a large group of volunteers who came for three days to the Shipbuilding Museum. And then after the students leave, they would work at night to continue some of the work so that the students could pick it up the next day, so that they could come on Wednesday and row on Friday and launch their boats. And these are beautiful boats, and the students were using all kinds of hand tools, they were gluing and drilling, using drilling jigs and screwing in and getting it all, and doing all that kind of work. For most of them, they'd never picked up a hand tool before, and so it's really impressive to see how quickly the students understood what they were doing and got right to it. And I just have to say that Amy Donnelly and Dave Brown did a great job organizing this whole thing, but there must have been a dozen volunteers who will give two to three days of their time to work with our students. It's a really impressive opportunity for our kids.
And this follows the egg drop, which happened earlier in the week, where the kids do whatever they can to make the egg not break apart, right?
Right.
Fantastic.
Well, as we wind down, here we are. Been a good year, something like, made it through.
We always do.
We always do. And those students, the consent agenda, are there any items on this consent agenda that we would like, anybody would like to remove?
I would like to remove the BNF minutes from April 25th.
So that is A7. Anything else? Okay, so, there's a reason?
Yes. The minutes don't mention, there are two things very obvious. Oh, the lunch prices, it talks about our discussion, but it didn't say that, I think it should be clear that lunch prices remain the same for the next school year. And the other piece is that, I think somewhere it should mention that Tom, before our CFO was unexpectedly absent, and therefore some of the questions could not be answered because of that.
So, as amended, do we want to make a motion to accept the BNF minutes from April 25th?
So moved second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we will move on to our deliberations on educational issues. And first up is the Gloucester High School School Improvement Plan for 2018-19. Principal Cook is here.
Thank you for having me. So the Gloucester High School Improvement Plan, two preparatory statements that I think would be helpful. First is that the philosophy or the approach that the Site-Based Council provided a lot of feedback in this plan was that we should continue to develop the areas that we already started. We want to go deeper with them, we want to go further with what we've just started, rather than adding additional items. And the second part that informed that is that in this coming fall, as part of the revised NEASC accreditation process, we will have a school growth plan that will include feedback from a consultation visit that will take place on October 9th and 10th, in which we'll get some feedback on our self-assessment of the school. And that will, this school growth plan, one of the exciting things about the new NEASC accreditation process is the school growth plan required by NEASC accreditation and the school improvement plan can run in concert, they can run together, rather than the old NEASC approach. You'd spend a couple of years doing accreditation, self-assessment work, and then you'd get a kind of, like, here's how you did, right? Here's how your school is, you get a kind of grade, rather than having the process start early in the process with a growth plan that then you can work toward achieving some of the growth before they assess the school, not for accreditation. So what I talked about here in the school improvement plan will be built upon for this accreditation school growth plan later. So those are two preparatory statements. The principles that, there are two principles for the school improvement plan are to promote student learning and growth through purposeful and engaging curriculum instruction and assessment in every classroom, every day, to provide social, emotional, and academic support for all students, and to promote inquiry-rich learning and higher-order thinking supported by technology. I think in the information provided to you, you can see how, I'll get into it all now, but you can see how the strategic objectives in the district improvement plan align with the school improvement plan. And then there's, after that, there's some information about, if you want to know a little bit more about the relationship between the school improvement plan and the school growth plan, that will come with accreditation, there's some more information in the next page. So in terms of the goals in this school improvement plan, the Gloucester High School student growth percentile on both ELA and math, 10th grade, MCAS, will exceed 50 for students overall, for students with disabilities and for high-needs students.
Do we put it up on the screen?
We can.
For those at home in the audience.
Good things will come. We're gonna...
There we go.
Thank you. So the first goal, which is related to the goal we had last year, so again, this is about deepening and furthering the efforts that we've begun, is to make sure that the student growth percentile exceeds 50 for students overall, for students with disabilities and for high-needs students. So we're targeting overall students as well as subgroups, and we're focusing on growth. I think we heard that from the elementary teachers as well, we're also focused on growth rather than hitting a certain number. We want to make sure even, you know, students anywhere, whether they're all ready, advanced students, at a needs improvement level, wherever they are, we're targeting growth. There's some information here about where we currently are. In fact, we did, in math, already reach 50 this year for overall students, and for high-needs students, 49 in math, so. Let's see, some of the other areas where we need to do some work to get there. Science is a little bit different, can you slow down? So we also have a goal for science. The Gloucester High School Composite Performance Index, which is, I think is the thing that the elementary teachers moved away from, but we don't have, there's, at a previous meeting, but we don't have a growth percentile in science, it doesn't exist. So we would use it if we had one, so we have to use the next best thing, just the CPI. So we're looking for, we're still looking for growth there. We want to improve by one point or more for all students, for students with disabilities and for high-needs students. So the work behind this, the kind of work that the professional learning communities are doing to achieve these goals, whether it's science, ELA, or math, it's the same kind of work, it's just that we're using two different measurements to achieve, to see if we've, if the work is paying off with students. Our goal, our third goal in this area is the implementation of a school-wide homework norms to facilitate purposeful and engaging instruction. This is something we also did this year as well. Next year, our focus will be more on the monitoring and reflection on the norms, like how is it going? How are we doing with these homework norms that we've implemented this year? So it's a shift, again, it's a deepening initiative, a shift from implementation to a monitoring and reflecting on how we're doing. And the homework norms are a little complicated, but they are listed there, that's the review. The, I will add at this point that, before I move on to social, emotional, and academic support, that the homework norms, we, a lot of great feedback from teachers working in each department and also from parents. Parents had, gave a lot of feedback, and finally, students, students had a lot of great feedback here. So that initiative was particularly collaborative effort between students, parents, and teachers. The next area, in which we have several goals, is to provide social, emotional, and academic support for all students. So how we're doing that is to expand social, emotional learning, professional development for GHS teachers and support staff. This year in November, all teachers at the high school received youth mental health first aid training. I'm currently working with our adjustment counselor, Amy Camm, to design what the professional development will look like next year. So again, it's about deepening, starting the initiative, and we want to see it all the way through, so that all of our teachers have the skills needed to offer particularly the social, emotional support for students. It's an area we've identified as a need that's been seen in surveys by parents, students, and teachers, and we're responding to that need with professional development. The second goal in this area to be, is to implement social, emotional learning advisory program for GHS students. So we're planning eight social, emotional learning sessions throughout next year, and this is work that is related to the professional development work that will inform these social, emotional sessions. They're on topics such as having a, starting with the idea of being a school in which we embrace difference, in which we see difference as a strength, differences among our students as a strength, and in which students are empowered to take action, to intervene, to stand up when they see people who undermine the values of the school. So that is often under the label of a bystander training situation. And then focusing in later in the year on areas such as relationship safety and dating violence, some more specific places where students can seek adult help and be, although they may not be directly involved, what can a student do when they see students who are struggling with social, emotional issues? So that's a little glimpse of what the eight sessions might look like. To achieve those eight sessions, we designate, we have developed an adjustment to our schedule that allows us to have eight blocks during the day instead of our normal seven, with one of them dedicated to a social, emotional learning purpose. That's how we get done. Now we're going to move into the area of inquiry, using technology. So at the high school and throughout the district, whenever we talk about technology or always, technology for what? We can take very old-fashioned kinds of education and simply use computers instead of a pencil, but that's not where we're going. We're implementing the technology to promote inquiry-rich learning and higher-order thinking. So, again, so now we've developed inquiry-rich understanding by design units across the curriculum. We've implemented those this year. So the work of the inquiry school growth team, so we had eight different school growth teams, which were teachers using after-school time rather than being dictated by the administration all the time. There were days each month set up where teachers were involved in teams to try to achieve some of these goals. One of the goals, one of the groups was the inquiry school growth team. They decided, they targeted certain areas in our units that could be stronger. So they identified some exemplars, some really good UBD units, and then identified how through, in each department, the units look a little different, and there are different ways that they can be stronger. An example would be in differentiation for learners with different learning styles and learning needs, so that's one of the areas where they identified that these units could be stronger. It's one thing to assign, or put it a different way, it's one thing to assign really cool projects, but how do you help all students be able to do that? We often see the very best of those projects, right? We, you probably get emails, like sharing some of those very best projects, but then there are other students who struggle to get there. And so how do we support the students who, for whom open-ended inquiry might be difficult? How do you scaffold that for them, help them get there? That's what this initiative's about. And next year, we'll complete, the next goal, next year we will complete the implementation of the one-to-one Chromebook initiative. In other words, students ninth through 12th grade will have Chromebooks throughout the school. And so, although it seems, you know, less, a little less exciting than some of the other initiatives, the logistics behind that are really important to figure out, and that's what this goal is about, making sure that we can do this effectively. And then the last goal has to do with promoting inquiry through our career vocational technical education classes at Gloucester High School, our CTE classes. And this entails the completion of the Makerspace and the integration of that Makerspace with the vocational classes and with our engineering classes, our CAD classes, to really maximize inquiry learning and applied learning in vocational classes and vocational classes in relation to some of our other classes like engineering and CAD. So that's what this initiative's about.
Any questions?
Hi, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. James. So, I assume you go through this with Site-Based Team that you have, from just very many teachers, of your Site-Based teams?
Usually two, yeah, two teachers, but this also gets shared with all the teachers. So for instance, this document that I'm looking at is in what we call our Gloucester High School Important Documents folder, with a Google Doc with that, this is, it becomes a working, it's a live document, not just something that happens at a school committee meeting and just sits here. So it's shared with all, and we use faculty meeting time to review the principles. I haven't emphasized that this spring so much because we will be adding some things based on the NEASC visit with that school growth bit I mentioned earlier. So in October, they'll be visiting us, giving us some feedback on our priorities. And they'll be doing a tour of the school, visiting the classes and all of this, so I don't want to get too far down this road and focus on this one, there will be some things added after. Which is a great opportunity, you know, to get some people, whose job it is for two days, to look at our documents, look at our units, visit classes, look at the structure of the school, and give us some advice. Okay, thank you.
We now have the O'Malley Innovation Middle School Improvement Plan, and here to discuss that is Principal Lucy for the last time.
For the last time. I'll begin by saying thank you. Thank you so much for your support. It's been eight years, it's been wonderful. I've been embraced by the community, it's been an honor to work with your kids, just to, because they're my kids now, too. So thank you, thank you for this opportunity. So I'm going to start first and talk a little bit about what we've done this year, recap, and then go over the goals. The goals pretty much remain the same. Math, science, ELA, and then our social, emotional goal. I have two, as Jamie said, his will change a little bit, this is with a caveat too, because July 1 is a new principal. So she may add, and by the way, she will be amazing, I've spent some time with her, and she'll be great, be great. But there may be some changes in here too, and some tweaks, because it's the current vision and there may be some additions. So if we're going to start, let's start with the first one, which is math. I'm now going to go over MCAS, we've gone over MCAS. One of the things that I am excited about though is that now that we're back with MCAS versus PAR, we're going to have DART information, you know, the district that are most like ourselves, and we'll be able to look and compare, which is really nice. We had that for a long time, and then for a long time we didn't have it, so that's great. This year was the first year that we, I really felt like we had our legs under us with data meetings. Data meetings have taken off, they are just part of what we do. There, Greg's been involved with some of them, and we've been there, and we've seen some nice growth. It's nice to look at our homegrown information, our common assessments, our ECCVM, things like that. Big ideas is our new math, well, I shouldn't say it's our new math program, we're in a couple of years in there now, but it's taken a couple of years for us, for the teachers to really be comfortable with it, to understand all the interventions that are embedded in there, which are important. And so we have those, we have the data meetings three times a year, we've looked at that, so that has been great. We focused on differentiation instruction and progress monitoring, and we meet monthly as a vertical team, all math, six to eight, to make sure that we are hitting all of the benchmarks, everything that we should be doing. benchmarks, everything that we should be doing. And again, the data meetings are the three times a year on that. With ELA, we have killed ourselves with writing this year, asked the teachers who have had to score all of these things. The main thing that I think we need to break from is we've seen significant growth, over 10%. Every student has gone up, which is amazing. It's been instructional, and I have to give kudos to Shayna Gobin, who has been by their side and truly helping them tremendously, cheerleading them, over-the-shoulder coaching when they needed it, helping degrade essays when we were backlog, just amazing, so kudos Shayna on that one. So again, the three data meetings, great, we're seeing, we're really impressed with the data, we've been doing that. We had PD, explicit PD, that all the teachers participated in about content writing, and that's been important, because content writing just can't be in ELA. Social Studies has taken a little bit of load off of the ELA teachers and have been trained. Shayna again has been working with them, going into the classrooms over the shoulder, you know, helping them out, which has been tremendous with that. Lit Circles is something that we started, and it's really for kids to access reading on their level and then to be pushed a little bit. High-interest books, books that are good quality, and kids are reading, and they're reading a lot. I think Larray told me there were 280 books in seventh grade that were read by different groups, lots of reading, lots to do. And at least, the teachers have done at least one Lit Circle, but many have done two or three to do that. And that differentiates, helps with the needs of the students. And we really, I would say underestimated ourselves. We've reached a goal where we focused on the scope and C, really looked at what needs to get done, where it needs to get done, and consistently across grade level and then up vertically as well. Science, Joel, you asked me last year what I would be most proud of out of all of this, and I said if we start bumping science. Our goal was 3%, we went up 13%, we went from 29 to 42%, which is 1% above state level, which is amazing. Again, science teachers, they started with the new frameworks, rewriting sixth grade. This, last year they did, I'm sorry, this year they're doing seventh, and we'll talk about eighth grade will be for next year. But they are aligned, innovative, we're putting in projects with them, and it shows. So they're doing something right in that. And then the fourth goal is the social and emotional. We have the sales, and we'll, I would imagine we'll always have that, it's just embedded in there. We started a couple of years ago PBIS. There's some positives and there's some negatives that we've found in the school. We really need to tweak what works for us with PBIS. PBIS is great for the how-tos. And what we did is we blended it with sales. So our PBS message is, what does service look like in the cafeteria? What does acceptance look like in the cafeteria? Integrity, doing the right thing, being the leader, what does that mean, making sure everyone cleans things up? And then what happens, we have a well-working staff, that type of things. The NIDREs of other parts of PBIS have been a little rocky with us, so they're going to be looking, that's going to be something we're going to be talking about. But one of the things that we have, much like James is doing, too, is looking at the social and emotional needs of our students. We've had a lot of PD internally from our school adjustment counselor and social worker and school psychologist. We, and so that's, it continues to be a high need. For the upcoming year, in math, they've had two years under, they will start with math, the two years under develop with big ideas, now it's time to really delve in and get into the interventions, and they'll be doing that. And looking at and focusing on differentiation. You've got the Nutribold, you know the program, now, now let's reach everyone and make sure that everyone has access to it. There will be a consultant that will be working with the math rates, particularly working with the interventions and making sure that we reach everyone. Our goal is increase, we want growth, we want to see growth, we want to see growth in our data meetings, we want to see growth in our scores. If we're aligned, we're going to do that. Let's see here. With in ELA, we're going to continue the data meetings. We're going to work on the common scoring, making sure, and calibrating, making sure always, because you can never calibrate enough to make sure that everyone's scoring properly. Lit Circles, we're going to expand those, because children read more, want to learn, and so getting them engaged. Working with large group and small group instruction, again, they can learn a little bit from the elementaries, right? Going teacher tables and then working to stations, that's really, that's really what needs to get done, to reach everyone. And data, data, data meetings. Writing, making sure that teachers understand all the protocols for writing, making sure that we're using the same formats. Looking at MCAS, really hoping that our growth in the data meetings is going to transcend into MCAS as well. And also looking into and doing some professional development on vocabulary, on close reading, and on high-leverage strategies as well. Writing, we talked a little bit, Social Studies started taking over a little bit of writing. That's going to continue, the content writing, making sure that they understand and have rubrics that make sense for them. The reciprocal teaching, we'll be working with BSRI again this year, and that will help us. And then looking at grade five data for transition and making sure that we have a good idea of what's happening with our incoming sixth grade. Let's see here, the science, science continues this next year, grade eight, which is, has truly the least amount of changes, they're the ones that have, you know, standards have been taken from others, from grade eight and put down, so there's not as much. And then focusing on, grade eight will document, and then focusing on the inquiry-rich models, which we, making sure that we have those as well. Social and emotional, having our sales assemblies, starting at the beginning of the year, reintroducing everything. We have assemblies four times a year, we just had one. And then one that we are looking in, we're having here, this may be tweaked a little bit, but we're looking into a grant, or may look into a grant, that will help us with trauma-informed practices, much like veterans did. And, you know, their kids become our kids, and it's important, we have a lot of kids with trauma. This may, could be delayed a little bit, depending upon what, you know, the priorities that they have, not the grant, not the actual instruction and looking into this, but maybe the grant, it could be delayed a year, but that's what we'll be doing. And that's all for the session.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, well, we're not going to give away any. I will, I'm sure other people will want to say something, too, but I just want to thank you very much for your eight years of service overseeing the transition from our regular middle school to the innovation middle school. I would say that 10 years ago, or eight years ago, the reputation of O'Malley School is not in what it is today. Today, it's looked upon as one of our shining stars in our system, so I'd like to thank you.
I'll follow on. You've led with such warmth, and, you know, people immediately feel humbled having their kids attend the middle school, and you've done so much, and as Jonathan said, so many things are different, the STEM suite, the learning commons, I just see so much different from the time you came to now, and I know you work very hard. I also see that you empower the teachers very much and involve them in everything, and I think O'Malley and the kids benefit tremendously from that team approach. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and my son was able to manage this.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Well, I mean, but I just want to thank you for everything you've done for our community, for the kids, for the school. I mean, it's been just a pleasure, happy to have you as our principal, you've worked, you've worked well with administration and the school committee, I just want to thank you for all the effort.
Just to add to a little bit more than what I told you last night, we're getting on heels tonight. Congratulations on your retirement, I'm very happy that you get to have family time, and I think you're going to have a lot of time with that. It's my understanding we were the first middle school innovation school in Massachusetts, so you are the queen that led the first school, so you always have that title to me. And being autonomous school, the way that Innovation School was set up, there has to be a lot of trust and confidence and leadership to achieve what we have done, and you've proven that you have that, and that's a big accomplishment for the large group of teachers and students at that age level. So I commend you for all your dedication to the community, all the hard work that you put into the school, and just wish you nothing but the best of happiness with your grandchildren and all the extra time you're going to have for yourself now, because it's very, very well deserved, so enjoy it.
Thank you.
Do we have a little something for you?
Yeah, thank you, I mean, you moved O'Malley into O'Malley in the community as well, everything that we know, but the community now looks at this school like living a different light, and that has no small part, I know, for your show. And Gloucester, you have a huge debt of gratitude for that, and since you are a resident of Gloucester, you can't run from the school. So you've got one year of retirement.
My son will be a sixth grader for eight more years, so I'm probably going to retire on. So whatever, join retirement, I guess.
Thank you so much.
So that things will bloom and not just die in the days.
Thank you so much, thank you. And thank you again, as Tony said, I am a resident, I moved here because I just love the community. I'll be a part of the community, I plan to be involved with the community, it's in my heart now, so again, thank you so much.
You also have a chance to marry this student.
The next item on the agenda is, I get it there, college career plans for our graduating class, coming back, the P and L, I guess I should, you're the only one here.
Yes. So we had previously presented some preliminary information of the plans of, our post-secondary plans of our students, and so as part of our wrap-up with the seniors, we were able to get to a, you know, able to, before you get your cap and gown, you have to provide us with the information about what's next, you know, so it's how we went from the preliminary information to the information that you now have.
Good strategy.
Yes, it is a good strategy, oh, I think. So, you know, I think the information shows quite a bit of, actually, Dr. Self, I can pull up the page, the overview?
I don't, I don't think it's in this packet.
It's not in that.
It's in the packet.
Okay, so anyway, I, actually, I don't have it, I had it scanned over today to be put into the packet, but in terms of the overall.
Is it paper?
No, 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 that overview, the overview, just the overview. So what we can see in our students here is, we have over 50% of our students will be attending four-year colleges in the coming year. About a quarter of our students will be attending two-year schools in the coming year. We have about 5% will be joining the military, about, well, exactly, 6.6% employed, and then there's 4%, 4.3% of students entering a career educational path. And then we have one student who is attending a non-U.S. college this year, going off to Trinity in Dublin, and another student who is doing an apprentice program in the coming year. And just one student with undecided plans. So I think Guidance Department did a really good job of capturing the, you know, where our students are headed, I think that's really important. And this, I think, reflects pretty much a steady sort of view over the most recent years of what our students' post-secondary plans are. I will highlight that in, we have done some work this year, particularly with the plans of the quarter of our students planning to attend two-year colleges. We've really targeted, we've really worked with those students during their senior year to make sure they actually go in September and that they follow through. So we have a program that's, we're working with Wellspring and with North Shore Community College on the follow-up. And so we'll have some good data next year on retention of students from this past year. So we started our work two years ago, around the time I started this, Principal. We refined and continued that work with this year's seniors, but we're also interested in seeing how well we did helping the students who are first-year students at North Shore Community College attend and stay through their first year. So we'll be working with Wellspring, I just had a short meeting on that yesterday, to follow, what can we do to follow up on those students? Because that was an area, we were seeing students who were saying they were going and then not necessarily following through on that. And so that became, using that data, we've been addressing that in some curriculum, strengthening the bonds between North Shore Community College particularly and Gloucester High School during their senior year, students are interested in that approach. So that's going to be a number of our students in that group.
Can I just ask you a question on that, because as I'm looking at all these students that are going to North Shore, do we have a dual enrollment program with them currently? do we have a dual enrollment program with them currently?
We have a few different agreements in various classes. So if there are various business classes that students get credit both for, as long as if they go to North Shore Community College, that they can use their Gloucester High School credit at North Shore.
But it's not an official dual enrollment program? Where they could actually go to school at North Shore even though they're seniors?
And we do also have students who start getting credit at North Shore while students at Gloucester High School.
Do they attend North Shore or they attend here?
They attend North Shore. So the first thing I mentioned was attending here for credit there. The second thing I mentioned is students who are going there for completing their, credit for completing their senior year here.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to see if you still start choosing the Biotech Academy.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
A wonderful educational experience, though it may not be the two-way college. It certainly is great grounding for all sorts of career opportunities for them and for future schools.
Right, exactly. And many of those students do go on to college as well, while employed in a great field.
Yes.
The success of a couple of our students are, unfortunately, our academic recognition night that was alluded to earlier was the same night as their graduation ceremony. So I did have the Dean of Students, Chris Cobb, did go to that and rushed back just in time for the, he was our representative there. But the valedictorian of that class was a graduate of Gloucester High School last year, who I happen to have as a student in my class as well. And we were just incredibly proud of the work that those students do there. The other great service of the Biotech program is for our students who might be a year, they may have, they may be working in a sort of non-career sort of field. They do that for a year or two, and they realize they really want to build something for themselves. So for students who are one or two years out of high school, the opportunity that that provides is unbelievable. And it has been reported back to us that of all the students, the Gloucester kids who have met up for a year or two are generally the strongest students over there. Because there's a kind of eagerness and a sense that we get it, we know what we need, and they're real leaders, right? And for maybe a younger student who's just out, I think about what an opportunity it is. So I just can't hear enough about the stories of, the individual stories, about the internships too, the interesting things they're doing in the various internships. Students get job offers, you know, a lot of times we get emails back from students after they get a job offer, after attending the Biotech. And it's really great.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next. Issue is the student handbooks. The second part of all of these handbooks is the same. So they are, they have a common second part. So I guess we'll just talk about the first part, right?
Yeah.
So to do the elementary.
So we, our handbooks have been the same for the five schools for a number of years. Last year, we went digital, which was nice. We made some improvements this year. As you mentioned, there's a part one and a part two. Part two is the policies that are common throughout the district. But we have a part one that's kind of more unique to the elementary side and some condensed language just for a little user-friendly. I just want to show you a little bit around the handbook. So we have our table of contents. And with this handbook sent out every year, parents are sent to a senate to read. They sign off that they have not chosen it. It's pretty lengthy. So we have some condensed wording and some user-friendly terms. So for example, if a parent wanted to get information on the bullying policies here at East, at all the foster schools, I'm trying to see. They can simply go to the link. If they click on it, it will jump right to that part in the handbook so they can read the policy. This, if you notice in particular, is the age-appropriate language. We kind of brought it down to a less elementary school level, so it's a little more appropriate. However, there are those times when a parent or teacher or somebody needs the full policy a little more to-depth. And they simply can scroll down here. At the bottom, it says, "See full link policy." And this is where it will jump to part two, where the full policy is there for their use. So it's meant to be more user-friendly. When you go to a document that is, you know, over 100 pages thick, it's hard to maneuver. This is a way to really jump around and get the information you need right at your fingertips. And let's see if there's anything else we might want to show. Things that might change from year to year, like the testing schedule for MCAS. It's just a simple click and it should jump right to it. But, okay, let's try the straight policy. If I go right here, it will jump. And it'll give us, and again, that's a condensed version, and they can go right to the full policy that is common for all. It's meant to be more user-friendly and, and I'll check that one later. It is all, it's already translated into Spanish, Portuguese, and Italian, I believe. And so it's available. Any questions?
One comment?
Sure.
One of the big advantages of having a part two that is consistent for all schools is that it costs us thousands of dollars to translate this handbook all the time. And if we keep one portion that has most of the policies in it and we can track those changes, we can have that translated one time and then only make minor changes to it without having all the different levels and having that cost money each year. So it's a, it's a big savings logistically and also a big cost savings.
So. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just want to say that the part two is the result of the request from the, via parents to have more access to student-related policies. So once that was put into place, it only seemed logical to create a part two, which would be uniform across the district. And this is bigger, but because it's digital and because it's automated, it's, that doesn't really matter. But there's more information.
And our policies changed. We changed it in one document and not have to change it in each handbook. So we know that the policy that is out there is the most current.
So we don't, these are not available in a hard copy?
We have not. Last year, it was the first year we did not print them out. I received no complaints about that to the community. So what we did as elementary schools, we printed out the last page, the signature page, and probably liked the testing schedule a few things and sent that out. But the last year.
The feedback has been.
Feedback's been great.
And I hope that was a question.
It's posted on all the websites. It's readily available to everyone. If a, if a parent doesn't have access to the internet, we certainly would print out a copy.
Any other?
I have a specific question about one of the items, which is the discipline and section of this. And I think I can see a previous version that had the consequences listed out a little bit more in more detail than this. Has that been simplified?
So if you scroll down, there are some, they talk, it talks about level one, level two behaviors, the actual consequences. We didn't put it in there because.
The wording refers to the list of behavior consequences though. So parents may want to know what those consequences are. So.
Well, would that be in the?
In what tiny?
Go off a little bit.
Oh, wait, I'm on the next page.
Go off a little bit.
Yes, now I see it. Okay.
So then, so the other thing that I know I've, that's been brought to my attention is the bullying recess from students. And it's conflict with our health procedures that we approved. And sometimes I've heard it's not just one student, but it can be an entire class of students being held in by teachers on a consistent basis. And I would like it to be consistent with our procedures that we've, that we approved. I mean, recess is important, I think, for all sorts of kids unless there's safety reason. I would love to know that the practice is consistent with the way we have put forth information to the community.
So recess, I can speak to my spilling. There have been occasions where students miss recess, whether it be for safety reasons or whatever. It is certainly not commonplace. And it is done for extreme circumstances, but never the whole recess. And movement breaks are a part of every day. Our students are moving constantly at recess and beyond.
Are whole classes held in for behavior of abuse?
Not as cracked as, no. I, maybe there was a class that was held in for five minutes for they weren't settled down, or safety, all that. I can't, we can't send it out with an article or a language. But I can only speak to my school.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We'll put it as an item on our retreat, and we'll take a look at the health policies. We'll talk about it a little bit more and make sure that we're all engaged and consistent with the policy.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So we will move on to mentor.
To an elementary.
Do we have a middle school? Are we going to do the middle school yearbook?
Well, I was mentioning to Dr. Saffar that there were no changes to the middle school handbook this year, except for the, the hour format. Yeah. And name changes. That's about it. So none of the, nothing's been changed as far as content for us from last year, from this current year to next year.
So just one more thing on the wording here where it says loss of privileges recess. I think it should be clear what criteria is when there is recess and it's not abroad.
Right. Well, it was an opportunity to talk about it. I think we're getting a sense from the principals that it is to be minimized and focused on safety. So we'll clarify that and amend it. And since it's digital, you can even ask the school committee in August to.
To what?
If there's any modification in the statement that's been modified, we would ask to amend that.
I would just want to hear a report because we're here conflicting. She's saying she's hearing something, so I'm hearing.
Yeah, well, that's why I mentioned we'll bring up the retreats.
Your question was for entire classes to miss recess, correct?
No, no, I heard that in sometimes some kids, a group of kids, and sometimes the whole class. That's what I heard.
Logical consequences for a student who is not safe at recess might be for that student to miss recess? That certainly has.
That's not, that's not very strong.
That certainly has happened at my school, like entire classes.
Any else on the handbooks?
We can present the other two if you want more time to review it. Well, I know that the high school certainly needs more time to. I'd like to present the change I presented a little earlier today. I can present after the chart changes if we want to do that.
Present to me by you?
Yes. Sounds like a common expression. Yes.
Yeah, I mean, they're on the website. If they haven't changed, they're.
So for the high school, there are changes, a couple of which you'll be familiar with when we get to it, and a couple others are really about making sure learning from some experience, some practices that will be more effective. So the first slide, the first change is a change to the tardy to class policy. As you can see in green, the added language and the strike-through in the language that was eliminated. So for periods two through seven, teachers will accept a tardy student into class without a pass. Previous practice was to, the student was, arrived to class after seven minutes. They were sent to the dean of students' office and then would come back to class. This seems to only have the effect of having students be out of class walk-in. Instead, the new policy would be that if the student is tardy, that tardy to class is recorded in our student information system. And if they're more than seven minutes late, this is consistent with our attendance policy elsewhere that was approved by the school committee, they've been cutted, they're considered absent from the class because they're absent without excuse, they are cutting the class. And then, rather than having the dean of students deal with them, at this point, the cut policy that comes into play. And they're staying after school with a teacher or they're, if they're escalated, consequences, they now have an office detention. But we get them learning right away. If they're late, grab you from class right now. We want you to, we want you to learn. We don't want you going down to the dean and then they, and then coming back. You can imagine all the things that could happen to a student when they're going to the dean and coming back. You know, this gets them into class as quickly as possible. And in practice, this is largely what we do because it makes more sense to get the students into class as soon as possible. And then the consequences, or the tardiness, or the consequences for the cut come into play outside of the instructional time. Yes.
What's the incentive if I'm eight minutes late to bother showing up at all of this?
Right, yeah. Well, so you are still subject, so we talked about this, you're still subject to the coursework, right? You're still missing whatever you're missing during that time. There's also the possibility that if this is, that that would be taken into consideration by the dean of students. Spoke with the deans about this change, right? In terms of your consequences. Instead of an office detention, you might meet with the teacher during their designated after-school time, rather than having a full-hour office detention because you did enter the class. Joel, I know you're thinking just like the students in that. I appreciate that. That was one of the first things we thought of in the change to the policy. And that's, yeah. Thank you. On the next slide, this is one of the elements that we had talked about previously. And so earlier this year, we, the high school administration met with the middle school administration to review and bring closer our smoking and particularly e-cigarettes and vaping policies. So we've changed the first offense for smoking, the initial offense, to an up to two-day out-of-school suspension. Confiscation is not in green because I've changed, that was already there. But we are also adding an intervention. That intervention will be different, may involve the adjustment counselor, some resources that our adjustment counselor helps us with for some substance abuse counseling that could come about. Might be sessions with the dean and with the adjustment counselor, different kinds of intervention to help prevent the practice. Second offense, up to a four-day out-of-school suspension. And then progressive consequences for subsequent offenses that could continue to escalate at that point. So this is, these changes were in response to our experiences this year and our observations about both not wanting to have suspension policies that keep students out of school for too long because we know the effect that that has on classwork and increasing the likelihood of students dropping out when they have multiple suspensions on top of each other. But also wanting something that definitely created a sting, definitely created a sense of this is not something you want to be involved with, the out-of-school suspensions. The next slide has to do with the possession aspect of it. So sometime, you know, so we, there's a difference between students having these products on their person or in their backpack or in their locker, then actively using them. So, you know, sometimes we'll find a. So, you know, sometimes we'll find a student who just has a, a, a piece of the related paraphernalia, just a charger or just the, um, the, a cartridge, a jewel cartridge, if not, you know, they're not necessarily using in school, we still want it in school. So in this case, the consequences are a little different. First offense is four detentions. We have two detention sessions every week, so this is two, two weeks of detention. In our detention, students every day reflect, right, at least a page reflection on why they're there. So we build in the sort of, is the student getting the idea of the consequence or they changing their behavior? And then the second offense or possession immediately goes then to the suspensions as well. So that's a change.
Can I ask a question on that? On the first slide, when they were caught smoking, there was an intervention that involved adjustment counselor?
That too. There was an intervention there too.
Oh, there was?
Yep, intervention, intervention.
Okay, and that's with the adjustment counselor?
That's possession. Well, it can take different forms. For instance, this year, the adjustment counselor set up sessions for some of our students in the spring with an outside provider that you were able to get through, you know, they had a grant to be able to do this work for us and connected with them. So it's going to look, we're gonna use our resources to figure out what's the best way of getting that intervention for our students.
I, I only ask because possession and actually doing it aren't too far apart.
No, they're right, which is why we would intervene.
I just wanna make sure that it's, the, the...
We're still intervening. Yeah, we're still doing that. We're still doing, yeah.
And how many adjustment counselors do we have?
We have just one adjustment counselor. But again, we've, we have some, we're working on grants, we're working through Lakey to get up and see if we can get some support for the loss of the, we did have in the budget cuts, a loss of adjustment counselor at the high school as part of the Bridge program.
And that's what I'm trying to get at. So how many confiscations or catching of smoking would you say you have on a weekly basis?
So, well, it's, it's not where it was in January, February. It's down since then, but it's substantial enough that we will need to, you know, sort of root students, and this is what we did in the spring. The student is caught, you know, these days early in the month, and we have four or five students now, and then the, the, their, their consequences are happening right at that time, but we might not be able to offer an after-school, mandatory after-school session for those students with a, an outside provider until later in the month.
I just don't wanna see us saying we're gonna do something and then not following through with it because they have themselves some message, so that's why I was asking.
Sure, yeah. Well, interventions can, we can also take, there's curriculum that the deans can take and that we can work on, in, we can work on internally. You know, we, so ideally, there's some ideal interventions, and then there's some other things, taking the curriculum, and we will go through a process through the detentions with those students. And we've done that with other students too on different matters. So it gives us that flexibility to make sure it has a restorative component to it or learning, you know, it's an educational opportunity. We're teaching students, not just punishing them.
Thank you.
The confisc, the confiscation of just having a product, you know, when they legally bought at 18 years old, now does this also apply to teachers who have legally bought it? They shouldn't have it at the school?
But this is a policy for students and they're in our school. So if it's a policy against our school, they can't have it in our school?
Teachers can't smoke in the school, adults can't either.
I'm not searching teachers. This isn't about, you know, that's all another...
I just don't understand, they're legally purchased, they might get them in their purchase.
Because it's your rule that they can't, because of the clarity of the...
I understand the rule.
What is they have by a policy?
They're not legally, they can't legally buy a bottle of alcohol. They can legally buy cigarettes.
So we might have students in our school older than 21, and they could.
Teachers can't have alcohol in school.
If you're 20 or 21, they're already lost, they're similar.
They can legally have a fair...
I understand that, but don't ask me if that city applied to all adults because that's all I'm asking. And it doesn't make sense that it doesn't.
That would be a entirely different policy that would involve, you know, personal policies.
I thought we actually discussed that at one point.
We do have policies. We have policies for that area of our school.
No tobacco products allowed in school.
Smoking.
Your stuff.
No.
There's posters in our school, on our school yards.
It's a state law too. You can't smoke on school grounds.
I, I know, they're talking about just the having in their bag, after their purchase.
Session.
That's why I don't get it.
I think that would be something for the committee if it's interested in that, to look at what our policies are.
That is very costly, and some of these kids who smoke are some of our most at-risk. And does this policy also apply to the alternative school?
Does it apply? It does, they're part of the high school. Loser alternative program is part of the high school. Subject to the same policies. And we often have to do extra work. The dean of students, Bob Yalhali is, has a particular focus, although normally we divide up by grade, like ninth to 11th grade with one dean, 10th to 12th with another dean. Because the alternative school is such a unique situation, one of the deans is assigned to all the students at the alternative program, and we do regularly go up there to communicate with students about these sorts of things and help the, support the teachers and maintain the policies. And you can imagine this policy did, you know, was important up there this year. But because it's a school environment, it's issues about purchasing are different once you enter into the school. That's true, it's lots of different kinds of things, right? Weapons, alcohol, so many different things that maybe purchased legally but can't be in the school.
Right, but nobody can bring those in. That's what we said.
As far as the adults are concerned, we have to ensure that everyone complies with the state law. With respect to the, to the children, they have a protective mechanism in that if they may have it in their possession, but if we don't have a reasonable cause to search them, then there isn't gonna be any issue. At the same time, we have a responsibility to ensure that we are providing educational health and wellbeing incentives, some positive and some negative, so that we are in fact trying to educate them about the dangers and difficulties of these things. And if it means that there is a separate and distinct set of rules and consequences for students, it's our job.
Awesome.
Silence.
So don't take Tony back to school.
I don't smoke. I just find some of our most at-risk kids will be nearly naked and gone.
Well, again, the two-minute podcast, nobody sees it.
Yeah, stay it out, you know, it's not, I think it's fresh.
I, I think it's important, I, I think the, in some ways, it would be, the, the deans of students who are primarily first working on these issues are so good at implementing our rules and in a way that encourages students to learn from the experiences and grow from the experiences, which is why we emphasize interventions, that's why we emphasize the help students get. And believe me, this year has been incredible challenge on getting as many students as possible and interviewing with them and getting parents on board with helping them make healthy choices. And, you know, it's, I can say with 100% certainty that given all that we've dealt with, with not only e-cigarettes and vaping, but also with dab pads, you know, which contain marijuana, we, we haven't been sort of, we have lost the students that we, that have received punishments for these, they're not dropping out or because they're receiving these. They build, the, the, the deans take on these opportunities to build relationships with students. So rather than, you know, having it be primarily punitive, it's primarily about choices and making better choices to students. It's, it'd be, in some ways, you might have to be there to see them and it works, more imagining what a dean of students might be, but they do incredible work to us. Our counselor, part disciplinarian, part counselor.
But it also boxes in the dean of students too.
This...
Is that what we don't do?
Okay, well, I'm, I'm curious about that because we did get feedback when we presented this earlier about what may need to happen with our policies. I think this does give us flexibility when we say up to certain, you know, two-days out-of-school suspension. We are, I think we built in some flexibility into these policies. It's given us the flexibility to go a little bit further when necessary to make sure the consequences really are substantial enough. But we've also built in possibilities where we can work with students who might be going through substance difficulties and have addiction issues. We built that in. We're also working on, you may have read about it in the SS County papers, we're working, we're one of the schools who are working with, I'm not sure YMCA's, on alternatives to suspension, pass program. And we're working on the logistics right now, but that, that's another way of keeping kids engaged and learning while having the consequence. We can discuss it.
Is that it?
Uh, one more?
Oh, okay.
One more. So, um, we wanted to bring the policy for removal from a leadership position in line with the policy for candidates for a leadership position. So we noticed that we said certain things about allowing a student to be a candidate for a student government, for example, or a captaincy of a team, and then we weren't saying the same things about those students once they were replaced, towards removing them. So the language in green here simply adds language elsewhere that refers to candidates for positions and adds it to language for students who are already in a leadership position. So conduct violations in school as well as in the community, particularly with regard to alcohol, drugs, tobacco, e-cigarettes, and/or law violations, or any conduct that may reflect negatively on Loser High School, will result in removal from any leadership position. It's a consistent, being consistent about you can't be a candidate if you violate this. So we've also removed students who violate this.
The word will suggests there is no will room. Is there discretion? Not may result, but will result.
Yeah. So are you...
I'm curious, it seems to take away the broad sweeping, any conduct that may reflect negatively, but otherwise, kind of ownership of school.
So the judgment happens there, right? But if there is a violation to our policies around these things, it is a will.
You know, I'm not sure that's, you know, that's clear, but...
The violation means that there has been due process. Yes. And based upon the best evidence that administration has, that student has been responsible for the particular violation, which then makes them subject to removal. I understand the cut and dry, where the, where the variation comes in is during the investigation itself. Yep, so term that if it rises to that level.
The example I'm thinking of, right, is I'm a junior and I've had my license for five months, they pulled over the front of the car, I violated the law, I lose my license. So I was getting thrown off student council and kicked out being a captain. So I violated the law and it will result in my removal. Although it is a lapse in judgment, it is a violation of law, you know, perhaps someone doesn't deserve to, maybe they don't, I think the judge will call this off, but he goes...
It's different than other kinds of law violations.
Yeah. And this, this will seems to trap the schools to saying, I know it was just you driving and moving with your friends, you got pulled over for a headlight being out, but sorry, now you're now your captain of the basketball team, you're on student council, and you just lost your license anyway.
And the, the danger, I, I don't disagree, but the danger of changing will to may is that then there are potential accusations for being arbitrary and capricious.
And past the practice, you'll start and all that, and you don't have to do it again.
That is, it's fine. It's not that you guys have thought about this, that's fine.
I, I will say that I do wonder if there's a way in this...
You're not saying all law violations, so I think, and, you know, somebody in that scenario, does that really reflect negatively on Loser High? I think you would say...
It's a law violation.
I think we, I think I, what I, what I hear you to say is it could be...
Criminal violations?
The may...
Or if you say, either criminal violations.
No law violations.
Criminal law violations.
Yeah, but death laws are not criminal, that's civil that could still be looked negatively, so that's...
Sorry, we got, sorry.
Death sends a message of, what the messaging is.
Drafting my theory, I'm so sorry.
I guess is our point, we'd like them to use discretion if it was...
I would like to see them saying something like after investigation or thorough examination of the...
Well, the conduct violation implies all that. The due process has to take place.
So it's already taken place before, I mean.
Yep. Well, and it all has to be done right, otherwise it gets caught.
Okay.
So another way of approaching this is to give it a shot for here and see whether or not, or how many or to what extent. If it looks as if it's draconian to a point where it's having a negative impact on the school's culture, then we should revisit it.
Well, the beauty of having these digital is that we can change them at any point, you know.
We're changing them now.
And, uh...
We're going to...
But I'm just saying, anything can be revisited at any time. Without tying into, you know, thousands of dollars worth of paper printed.
And then to those circumstances, a note goes out and the student signs it, that has been an addendum or amendment to the handbook.
Are there any further questions on that next slide?
I was hoping, as an incoming parent and as somebody who has been a parent of an explosion of cell phones by every child, because as soon as my child hits sixth grade, everybody has cell phones for their school. And the middle school policy, they have cell phones during school. It's not like they can't bring them to school, they just can't have them in classes. They can be in their backpack, they can go to lunch and, right? I was hoping you might come to the same conclusion, that now at least a quarter percent of your student body is very used to not having cell phones during the day. So, I have a question.
So our, our policy is that teachers can, essentially very similar language to the O'Malley policy, let's have teacher discretion, because there are, we have students who successfully use their cell phones to take pictures of homework assignments that are on the board. Yes, they can use their Chromebook to do the same thing, but are they using their Chromebook as much as their phone? Yes, they could link to the two, but again, they're primarily in their phone. So several teachers, when we discussed this, I use iPhones work in the classroom. And, you know, for me, I'm able to create a policy where students have them face down on their, on their desks until they're used and then take them out. So I know where they are, they have to be there if they have one, and so on. So there are other, so high school has benefited from flexibility about the implementation, but includes language that teachers, that the administration supports teachers in doing what the middle school does, taking the phones into a bin at the front of the room, all of those things, if that's the best way to control the phones. So we support that, and it's written into the handbook.
And it's working for this.
So...
I mean, do you feel, do teachers feel like they're bad guy, if they're one of those teachers that say, don't, you know, put them near or don't put them, don't, don't let me see them, I guess would be funny, right? Yeah, pocket of kids, but...
Well, that's, it depends on, some teachers have them collected and other teachers keep, you know, have, just they can't be out. And, I mean, the policy is they can't be out, there is a policy, blanket policy, unless indicated by the instructor. Like that is the policy. Now, it's true, it's not as uniform as the middle school, but that's partially a response to the faculty wanting flexibility with the, well, it's entirely because the faculty wanted flexibility when I brought this forward to the faculty.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So we have a number of things to vote for. So we have a motion to accept a high school school improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Saying none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oath, it's unanimous. Do we have a motion to accept the middle, the O'Malley Innovation Middle School?
Seven.
School, our student improvement.
Seven, second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have the handbooks. And do we want to do these one at a time, or do we want to vote them all at once?
I don't think so.
I think it is all, it's all one.
They're, the second sections is all the same. So do we have a motion to accept the student handbooks for the elementary, middle, and high school?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion at all?
The, I think it's great though, the elementary school handbook is up. Is that active linking the same throughout the middle and high school?
Yes.
So that's great. It's really awesome to see the Gloucester School system utilizing the resources that the tools we provide. It's a great thing. I'm very glad we're doing it.
I mean, that's not on last year's, because I just went on the website.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you all very much, and have a good summer.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll move on to the next item, which is a report on work in elementary after-school hours.
So let me just continue to talk to our elementary thing today. I hope that, I wanted to present briefly a report on the work that has been done. We established through the last contract with GTA, 13 hours of after-school time. Next year it will be 14 hours. And this was all for work to be done that is related to the academic component of the school and/or the social emotional. And I can say that the response has been unique in each school and has been extremely robust. And it's an exceptional testament, both to the leadership at the elementary levels and equally so to the willingness for most of our staff members, our teachers, to say, well, this is what we need to do, let's embrace it. In fact, at least at one of the elementary schools, 10 teachers are using some of the goals that they established during this work for their own personal individual evaluations. I haven't had a chance to canvass all the other schools, but there are a number of teachers who have found this to facilitate the work that they're doing for their own evaluation. So with that said, just a very brief, and I don't know, Jared, if you mind saying a little bit about...
Sure.
Thanks again, Deb.
Thank you. Thank you again.
So at the Bevan School, I enabled all the teachers to get together and decide what kinds of committees they wanted to develop during this time. And we had everything from social emotional goals to math, English, school culture betterment goals. And we had different grade levels working together, cross-grade levels, all kinds of mixed staff and faculty working together. They, after much conversation about what an after-school meeting should look like and my expectations for the kinds of goals they should set for themselves, something that would be year-long and something that would overall show benefit to us far beyond just the school year. They set a side goal for themselves, they established what their action steps were. Each time they met, they gave me notes on what it is that they worked on. And at the end of the year, they shared out the progress that they were able to make, some people even choosing to continue their work next year as well. The vast majority of my staff did use them in conjunction with their evaluations and use them as evidence to show progress towards some of their student learning goals as well as their professional practice goals.
Can I ask a question? Before she sits down? Can you say with confidence that with these extra, they actually tell them the teachers are putting in that they are consulting with you as far as what is being done with those hours? How towards is their input from the teachers as to the direction of those, that time?
Yes, the teachers solely chose how to use their time. And then they worked with me and I ultimately approved the kinds of goals that they set for themselves. And then they submitted each time they met what action steps they worked on.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So at East Gloucester, we decided to go forth with this together. We made a long list of things we could work on during this time and came down to a vote that we wanted to do a book study altogether, one school, one book. And we are studying the Growth Mindset Coach. And it is broken up into a month-by-month kind of mantras of how to promote a growth mindset, both for us professionally, but also ultimately with our students. So we started out, like all other schools, talking about norms of collaboration, brainstorming ideas of what to use this time for, and then ultimately deciding on one book for the whole school. We then dove into, we did a chapter each time. The names of the chapters are called things like Teaching is a Practice, Not Perfection. Everyone can learn. We talked about promoting grit with our students and having them persevere throughout challenges, both academically and socially. I can say my advisory committee started with five and it was grown to about 12 members. They actively planned every, every meeting that we have. And we got through eight of the chapters. We will continue that work in the fall to finish the book, and then we'll see where we go. But it's fun to hear the language of the growth mindset in the hallway. You know, students say, I can't do that, and within seconds, people saying, you can't do that yet. We're working towards it. And it's kind of brought the staff together, and I think it's been a very positive experience.
Just could you hear it? What times did your school pick to...
So because we're an early school, we chose afternoons and typically on Tuesdays where we don't have staff meetings. I think there was a day around Halloween, I didn't, we didn't want to stay on Halloween, so we moved that one to a Wednesday. But for the most part, it was Tuesday afternoons.
Good, thank you. I think Talina can probably talk to the, later on, to the question of whether or not morning meetings. Which I think we're alluding to, the possibility...
I was just curious how they all decided.
Go ahead, dear. Sorry, Deb.
You got me.
So far, everything that Jody and Amy has mentioned have been at Funko as well. They looked at the school improvement plan, they looked at the district improvement plan, we looked at MCAS, and then we sat down as a whole staff and we looked at the staff meetings, and we looked at the PLC meetings. And we decided as a staff, what falls under staff meetings? What could fall under PLCs? And they came up with three different ones. One was around writing, the other one was against, around math, not against, around math, and the other one was social emotional. We, the five elementary principals, got together and we kind of made up our staff meetings and our after-school meetings. And I sat down with the GTA reps, I know some other people have here, and they wanted to front-load the after-school meetings so they can use them as evidence towards their action steps for their student learning goal or professional practice goals. So I was very happy with that. And the work they did, they presented to the whole staff. People came up with, you know, social emotional things that we've heard of, but how to really implement them. They're looking into taking the second step to curriculum, how can we add it to literature so that it's not like another add-on, but we can start reading literature that goes along with empathy and all that stuff, and have good discussions with the kids. The math was right around geometry, that our district, you know, it was a little weekend, but there's only so many questions on the MCAS. And then they were like saying, you know, let's have consistency with common language around math, so kids from K through 5 will know what we're talking about from grade level to grade level. And it worked out very well. And they all report up. And every week, somebody takes on the leadership as far as they group, and they report back to me who was present, what they discussed, what they looked on, and they send me any of their end products. So it's been working very well.
Sorry, do you have another question? So you divided into topics. I'm curious where music, art, physics, some special education, teachers, reading coaches, where do they see themselves?
Social, emotional, because they see all the kids. And they have the behaviors, and they want to learn how to control those behaviors so they can get the most out of their dirty mags with the kids.
So West Parish took a little bit of a different approach. We started, we found out early in the year that we were a title-one school for the first time. So we used one of our very first PLC meetings to sit down as a whole school to explain what being a title-one school meant. Shayna was there with us, we talked about what it meant, our opportunities to utilize the funding, and some of the different options that Shayna and I put together to talk about how we, what's our greatest need as a school, and then how do we utilize the response to meet that. And so we were able to target mathematics. We were able to create a before and after-school math club for students, grades 1 through 5. We had over 120 students that we served. We were able to get teachers from that meeting to say, yes, we think we are the most qualified people, we're certified, we know what they need to do. And so we were able to mediate a very large number of students through that empowering process. So that was one of the first things that we did. And then the other pieces that we did, we had a few whole group trainings just that were identified as a staff who need time to do this. So Adrienne and Kimon led a Moby Max training that she borrowed from Funko, and we did it with the staff who were implementing that for the first time. People really wanted to get it up and going. So we did that as a whole staff training. And then grade levels, we really focused on the school improvement plan. The three goals, the two goals specifically that we focused on during PLCs were the science implementation and writing collaborative scoring. So grade-level teams on certain weeks would meet either on science or writing. Sometimes we had some vertical meetings where we talked about science altogether. On our January early release day, we did collaborative scoring vertically also. And then on our last early release day, we had, used Google Forms to sign up for technology trainings that we thought were going to help us meet the needs of our students and meet the school improvement plan objective. So with those things happening, we had a few constant PLC groups. I had a new teacher in the PDD program who was a first-year teacher as well as doing MCAS alts for the first time. So we created a small group which also included some of the speech pathologists to work on MCAS alt learning board maker. How do we create the instructional tools to help students show their progress as MCAS alt wants us to show that? So that became a consistent for them to... My more veteran teacher was able to teach model coach the process through March as the new teacher was trying to learn that process, which proved to be invaluable for them. Kindergarten was really working on utilizing handwriting without tears and talking about the instructional processes and tools and strategies. And then we had one team, again, really looking at the social emotional. I talked about this a little bit last time we were here for the school improvement plan. I had a PLC group that worked on answering the questions that staff had early in the year at a staff meeting. What would we like to answer in staff meetings? All of those questions, the PLC group researched the questions, put together agendas and facilitated staff meetings around school behavior and how would we come up with school expectations in March. So it was a busy year, just a little bit, it was targeting individual things at different times. So we had a...
And Matt Fusco's not here, unfortunately. He has reported as well that this has been a, Jared's giving a very positive experience. Some of the things that different groups have worked on include science journaling. He had mentioned that he spoke with the kindergarten teachers and said that this may be too advanced. Dave himself said, no, we'd like to work on that particular aspects of learning. We're preparing kindergartners for journaling in science. Grade 1 also worked on the same. Grades 2 and 3 seem to focus on geometry, looking at MCAS style questions and incorporating them. In special education, they were trying out a new phonics intervention program. I'm not quite sure if they're going to be implementing it, continuing or not. Some information I need to get from Matt himself. Grade 4 was looking at and researching just trauma sensitivity. We know that that is a trauma-sensitive school, and the extent to which they can deepen their understanding and put it into practice was the goal for grade 4. Grade 5, it seems to be looking ahead. They were looking at a number of books which they were sort of reviewing for next year for the read aloud portion of literacy program. So again, across the board, a great deal of variety. Teacher selected, principal reviewed and monitored. And what you have related is that the energy by and large has been really very positive.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who made this happen. Administration, staff, teachers, and also I want to pat ourselves on the back for this one, at a time when negotiating contracts is often difficult and times when orders are tight. I mean, this is proving to be extremely successful. And I think the community should be proud that we've invested in our teachers to get this extra time that in turn enhances our students. So kudos to everybody. It's just, it's great to hear how successful year 1 was. But thank you.
Thank you very much. And now...
They're all going to leave.
As everybody leaves.
This is going to be a special...
This is reported on the superintendent's board. The elderly...
It's going to be special. The less special part is my part.
And I thank you.
And it has to do with circuit breaker enforcement. I think that you're aware that the governor has approved $12.5 million increase for a circuit breaker for this year for FY18. This amount is approximately $100,000 addition to our circuit breaker for this particular year. There for FY19, there's an $18.6 billion differential between the House's appropriation and the Senate's. I haven't read about it in the last couple of days. My last understanding is that the conference committee's working in order to reconcile that difference along with many others. Item number two, the state of Massachusetts. The Department of Ed is revising the Massachusetts history and social science curriculum framework. They are reexamining the 2003 Massachusetts history and social science curriculum, outlining investigations and re-establishing a vision and guiding principles. I think the take-home message, the two key priorities are increased emphasis on civics education and methods and resources that'll deepen students' understanding of history, civics, geography, and economics. They are recommending, and we will be implementing next year, a full year of grade 8 civics. It's interesting because they, meaning the social studies department of middle school, have lobbied for teaching civics prior to the trip to Washington DC. And the consensus was to use the further, two months prior to the trip as an introduction to civics. Now they're going to have a whole year, so those guys are people like pigs in mud. They're very happy with the opportunity to move into the studying of civics. And the other important piece is that these curriculum is going to cover integration of civic standards up through the grades. So that is a cumulative scaffolded kind of information with respect to history and government. Item number three is, has to do with mentoring and the buddy-buddy system between grade 8 and our kindergartners. Whoops. And to present that information, we have Dr. Shannon Golden. Let's see if we have that picture up there.
So those are friends. And so this program, this program is sort of like a brainchild of Allison Cousins and I got together. She's one of the guidance counselors. And what we did is, Deb was not kidding when she said that I literally have been putting writing down the throats of everybody who walks through the middle school doors. So this was one of those sort of, how can we bridge literacy skills in other contexts? So what Allison Cousins and I did is we matched up social emotional goals for students and then literacy goals. And we formed a buddy partnership with the Bevan kindergarten students. And we matched up 8th graders with 1, 2 students max at the kindergarten level. up eighth graders with one, two students max at the kindergarten level. And the eighth graders met six times, two times separately. The two times they met separately, we focused on two skills. Each, each time we met, we had a social emotional skill and also a literacy skill that we focused on. So the first time was leadership and then we wrote friendly letters to their buddies and it was knowing your audience and how do you, what do you convey to different types of audience members? And then the second, third, and fourth meetings were the eighth grade and the kindergarten. Each time they, they did some sort of literacy activity that focused on a specific concept of feelings or feelings through literature. And then the fifth meeting was the eighth grade again, which is a closing letter and how you, again, going back to the audience and writing for a specific purpose. And then the sixth meeting, this is what this is, we invited the kindergarten to Beeman, I mean to Omeley for an afternoon pizza party where we watched Inside Out, which we used as sort of the basis for the feelings. And it was great. I have to say, it was much more than we expected it would be. We sort of were like, let's start small, whatever we can get. But some of these kids that we have seen consistently struggling both behaviorally and academically really shown in this department, so.
Talking about the kindergartners and the eighth graders or both?
Both, both. The kindergarten teachers were very receptive. They've already asked if we can do it again next year. And they said the same thing, that the, the kids really just, it was, it was fantastic how much they embraced it. I mean, the eighth graders, one of the eighth grade students right after they had came up to me and said, she said, I think I miss my buddy already because I think it was as good for me as it was for him, which pretty much sums up what it was because I think, I mean, I think they just enjoyed it tremendously and you can see they had a great time.
That's great. That's a great point. Did you get any, how many boys participated? I know Allison was trying to convince my son.
Yeah, we, you know, we had more than we expected. I think we will have more in the future because it was very well received and we, there was some, a good amount of recognition that we did, like at the sales assembly and things like that, which I think was really encouraging. And I think it helped us that some of the least likely to participate boys participated in this and that actually really worked to our benefit. And not only participated, but really shown, it was really, that, that in particular was really nice and the young men mentoring the young boys was really key.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And item number four has to do with some of our, an example of some project based learning and it's the support that the entire inquiry environment at the high school helps to foster, to discuss that. We have Mr. Greg Marcus as the superintendent.
I guess the other fun part of the night, which is talking about great things we get to see when we go out and about to the schools. I took this picture the other day, I think it might have been last week, early last week, a gentleman who was, he is the director of STEM education for Department of, for DESI, the Department of Secondary Education, elementary and secondary education in Massachusetts is no longer working for them, but he is a real leader in this field and wanted to come to Gloucester to see what was going on because of the engineering program, among other things, at Gloucester High is truly exceptional. So he was in Kurt Lick and Walt's classroom and they were looking, there were people who came through and some GEF representatives were also touring and everybody was taking a look at this. This is a single wing, one wing of two for a drone that a student was building. And that's six feet long, one segment is six feet long. And everybody was quite impressed by it. It's made out of carbon fiber, it's very light and extremely strong. And if you know carbon fiber is, I think, for its weight, stronger than steel. So they were looking at this, he had designed the whole thing himself and was building what will have a 13 foot wingspan. And everybody moved on. And though this was very interesting to me and I was very impressed by it, my first question was, how did you cut all of those segments so accurately out of carbon fiber? Because this is fairly thick and really tough too. And he had not even thought to show me what I considered the best thing I saw, I've seen in a long time is, I turned, he turned around over his left shoulder and showed me this. Now, if you can see this, this looks like a piece of driftwood that washed up behind the high school. This is a, this is scrap material from, that he scavenged from everywhere, cast off pieces of wood. Truly, this stuff is an old piece of plywood that looks like it's been around for years and cut up some pieces. And he assembled this all into a frame and you can see here, there's a router which is bolted to this other board and also rubber bands for some additional support. And you can see a plate of carbon fiber with the cutouts. Now, that's great. So it appears that he had made a nice router table so that he could cut them out. That's not the whole story. Wedding, oh, whoops.
We lost the picture.
Where are the pictures?
Ah, there's the picture of the computer.
Nope, that's it. Oh, there were four pictures. I don't know where. Okay, I can find the. That's okay. I'm going to blow this way up because I wanted to show you around behind it and I'll just have to zoom in. Yeah, we can do it this way. It's a little harder to see. See this rumpy old toolbox? This toolbox has a fan hot glued to the top of it. It has holes cut in the side for wires to go in. And so I walked around back and I said, what is this, a CNC machine? He had built a CNC machine. The inside this, well, toolbox is a computer board, a motherboard that he had scavenged from something else. Downloaded a free operating system called Arduino, programmed circuit board, wired it up, and this right here now is a computer, a computerized manner. So he put the design in and the pattern in and this thing is doing the job by itself. It's cutting these out perfectly. So he went, this student, Austin Limal.
Junior.
Junior.
He is a junior.
He is a junior, that's what I thought. He is a junior.
He is a junior.
He's a junior.
Knew that he wanted to build this. But in order to do that, unlike many, many people would say, well, I'm going to need, I'm going to need this, this and this, I'm going to need a $1,500 machine to cut this out or I'm going to have to go get it cut out by somebody else. Didn't stop him for one second. He just, as a, just a matter of course realized, oh, I gotta build a, I have to build a pretty high tech machine out of pieces that wrap behind the, well, man, this is an old router, sampled it all together. This thing is going, and it's just doing it all perfectly. So to me, that was such a great example of, you know, what, what Principal Cook is fostering in the school and teachers like Kurt Lick and Walt and many others are really doing, which is teaching students, but also setting them free but, and, and pushing them to solve if one thing, if your desire to do one thing creates another need or problem, not to just, you know, wait till somebody helps you, but go out and figure out a solution to it and make it yourself. To me, this student didn't even need to write apologies, I just showed the pictures. I built this, but I did this to build this and I know how to do this. It was incredible. And the student was really humble about this piece. He was really focused on the wing, but this to me represents the true goal, economic 100 wings or anything else he wants with that kind of initiative and ingenuity. Just thought that was reflected really well on our, our programs and what our kids are able to do. I want to share that.
Are there any questions to the superintendent? Do we have a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
Second.
They say hi.
Hi.
The board of the committee reports. First up is Mr. Gross. The Building Finance Subcommittee of May 16th.
Eight years ago.
May 16th?
Last month. I'll see if I can pull up the agenda.
The items are on there.
Yeah, they're there. So we had, there was a motion to put the little free, the free little library, little free library box in East Gloucester School. But I did get an email from the proponent, Jen Hall, Councilor Hallbrook about this when she mentioned it to Mike Hale. He did bring up the, the issue that it could be a, an attractive nuisance for a certain caliber of people that don't really want around in elementary school. So he suggested maybe put it inside the school.
You want to leave the school?
But you know what they have?
Exactly. I don't want to just sign them in.
So, no, 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 so it would just be for the school kids.
Only for the school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Wouldn't be, wouldn't be for the public.
Okay.
No, 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 no. It would be, would just be, you know, for the school community, it would be a little free library, you know, staff and, and parents who come into the school, things like that. No, not, not for the public. So, so that was, I mean, that was really the, the main issue, the only thing we really had to vote on there, I guess, in this agenda was, was that, that item. And so I don't know if we really do need to take any action on this to approve this going inside the school or not. I don't know what the committee thinks of that. It's not going on the ground. So I'll leave it up.
Don't get it changed, Josh.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'll leave that up between the principal and the superintendent and let the administration deal with that. Okay. So that got us off that one. And then the, again, as Kathy stated earlier, the CFO was not at this meeting. Oh, no, he wasn't, that's right. No, this is, they were tabled from the light of transfers, but the JV girls hockey team, it was an odd letter. We got this on our agenda to go from JV to JV and we got a letter from, no, it was JV to JV. And we got a letter from the athletic director and one of the parents saying, keep it as it's, no action taken. So we don't have to do anything, the girls JV hockey team will stay just as is, we're good, it's a cooperative with other.
Rockwood.
That's about, that was it. There wasn't much else other than usual business.
The, the, the letter, I think we all got it, but the letter from Julie Smith and the Rockwood AD basically stated that they felt that it would be unsafe for the girls to start playing at five, three level because of their, the skill level that they have at this point. And it's, would be hard to go against that advice.
And considering also the concussion awareness and as all of us who learn how to skate know how hard our heads hit the ice. So when, when you learn to skate, you really need to be, you need to be proficient if you're going to play a sport. That's about it.
So that's it. And now we have, we had a program, a subcommittee meeting to set up, the chairperson, Clint.
So we had a program, subcommittee, and the minutes are not here, which will give probably a much fuller accounting than I will on the vocational program at the high school. But we had asked for some background information that Assistant Superintendent provided, such as, you know, what's the enrollment by, what has been the historical enrollment by, by program at our school? What is the historical enrollment at North Shore, six agricultural technical, sounds not like that. We also got a very nice report on, on what people are doing that graduated in 2016 that have gone through our programs and you guys don't have it, but I think at least these reports should be attached to the minutes. It would be great because it really does show that most of our kids that have graduated are either employed or off to college, doing things related to their field that they study. Anyway, so I think we're, the program is, is a very valuable thing and we didn't know that, but it's good to have some data as to what, what people are doing after. Anyone else want to add other information? Is there another report?
We looked at programs that, and their enrollment at NSAP by Gloucester students and the kinds of things that they are enrolled in to see where we have crossover and where there are things that our students would not have access to, the health industries and culinary were too big, very popular ones at NSAP. But we also noted that some of our programs, including automotive program is growing and only has one or two students who go to, to NSAP for automotive. So it was a quick reminder of the importance of our programs and also it's a good view into what students are selecting at, at NSAP. Then we looked at 10-year, 10-year enrollment.
And the last thing, one of the things James brought up towards the end was discussion of the advisory councils that each program has begun to, has formed. It sounds like he's getting, that those have gotten off the ground, but he also pointed out that part of this should be a general advisory committee, which shall be, shall be led by the chief administrator officer of the school committee or DESI to act as a facilitator to the general advisory committee. And he would like to have the first meeting in the fall where he would have kind of one person, at least from each discipline or each program, participate that, to kind of fill that out.
Okay.
Okay.
For, you'll be free now.
Sure. Mr. Cabinet Maker, that'll be great with the conference room field.
We'll see. You get to call.
We also went over the student discipline policy, specifically adding procedures for the discipline of special education students on four, five to four plans. It is, it is. And the superintendent explained, it's just one of those things that did make it into all our review of these policies when we did it. So with that, I will make a motion that the school committee approve the addition to the student discipline file JK. Second.
And these, this is just the, some additional things required.
Yes. We had placed it in the student handbooks, but we did, backfill is the word I used last time. Looked back at the policy and said, oh yes, that has to be on that list. Just cleaning house.
So essentially, what is the clause, yeah?
Due process for special education students. And if, if there is a suspension of greater than 10 days or a pattern of suspensions that suggest a change of placement, there are different procedures that you have to follow for special education students, which includes what's referred to, I'm sure you've heard it before, manifestation of determination, to in fact determine the extent to which the disability may or may not. the disability may or may not have, you know, some burden of responsibility in the actions that led to the particular infraction, question of like, other circumstances, depending upon the nature of the infraction, could call for interim alternative educational placement, followed by a diagnostic over time, to see what the child's placement should be, and so on and so forth. So there are some special due process things that need to be done to protect special education students and their rights, and the role that a disability could or could not play in game number one.
So we have a motion, second. Is there any discussion? All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Yes, she knows.
And then the last item on the agenda was the review of public relations initiatives. And we brought forth a motion to, for the school committee to approve the ongoing public relations initiatives with Bridge, Cape Ann, and parent volunteers in support of Gloucester Education Foundation. A nice move?
Okay.
Second.
Discussion.
So our discussion centered on the fact that, that we know there are many facets to how we reach people in the community and in our schools, knowing that this, the, these two particular initiatives are part of kind of a multifaceted approach to just getting more positive press and more touches out there, because people are busy and they need to see things sometimes seven times these days before it actually says, aha, I saw that. So we were appreciative of the volunteers giving their time and expertise in, in this particular area of PR. And we feel that, you know, obviously the public relations effort, even though it may not be comprehensive and complete in terms of true video production and all that, we didn't think, well, as Michelle and I did not think, that it was a barrier for this to be one effective part of an overall effort. Joel was not present at this discussion.
Any further discussion? Joel?
So I, I don't think that the school committee should support this. I think we need to pump the brakes here. This to me sounds like a perfect example of us heading into something with no plan. If we're going to be serious about marketing the district, which I think is a good idea, I think if there's, you know, if GF's want to throw money at us to do this, I'd rather spend money to be spent hiring a marketing professional to actually come and give us kind of a macro level overview as to what we need to prepare to come up with as far as a plan, what we expect it's going to cost in order to execute. You know, this is not a dig at the Bridge, but, you know, this is a, the Gloucester Public School District is a $40 million annual budget, employs hundreds of people, has seven campuses serving specific subsets of target demographics, has seven campuses with individual reputations to manage, has an overall district reputation to manage. And the Bridge, if you go pull their videos, the most recent videos are for Trio Restaurant, Mingled Restaurant, D'Zorian Restaurant, the Sidewalk Bazaar, Pier 23 Restaurant, Cape Ann M L A Cookout, and Cross Country Mortgage, New Mortgage Company downtown. So I don't know that the Bridge is qualified to properly market something as all encompassing as a school district. I would much rather see us set, you know, a three-year goal and say, okay, identify what this marketing is set up to achieve. Are we looking to bring back choice students? Are we looking to prevent new choice students from leaving? Are we looking to bring in new choice from our district into our, you know, articulate what our goals are, and then map out how through a concerted, specific marketing plan, we seek to achieve those goals? And then we can measure against those benchmarks whether or not the efforts being undertaken on behalf of the district are in fact having a positive effect, or getting us closer to our goals. I fully admit that I'm not in marketing. I don't know if anyone here is in marketing, but even to have someone come and say that yes, these little things work, or to say, listen, if you're going to do marketing, you really need to do this right from the get-go, and sometime, you know, I don't know that something is better than nothing in this realm. It could be that something improperly or insufficiently executed is more detrimental than, than not executing anything.
Michelle?
I actually think this is a very good first step to an overall marketing plan for the future. I, I think we have to start somewhere. I'm very happy that we have parent volunteers and we have support from the Gloucester Ed Foundation who want to help us start on a marketing project, and I think this will be very helpful to our schools. I don't want to wait three years from now to market our schools, we need to start marketing them now. So I think this is a good first step, and I think this is something that we can build on in the future. So I want to support this motion.
I had the opportunity to attend the meeting and listen to the conversation. I missed, I think, the meeting that originally discussed this program, so it was kind of new to me, and I'm not that familiar with it. But the OCOM, I, I support the recommendation from the subcommittee to support this program's going forward, but hearing what Joel had to say, I think there's a lot to be said about his vision and marketing of the school, and I like to see things happen simultaneously. I think that's a good compromise. I think this getting, when I say this, I mean Joel's idea of a marketing study being sent to the program subcommittee while we are working with the Bridge, I think we can let the Bridge know our expectations, because those conversations will start soon, knowing Ms. Glancy and how she chairs her meetings. I think that we can have both happen at the same time. I support the Bridge, I support the vision for marketing. I don't know that we have to hire a consultant, that is something that can be figured out in program through an in-depth discussion, but I'd like to see both happen, and maybe the Bridge come on board with our expectations maybe a little bit more, if they're not meeting all the expectations of the school committee right now. I, for one, haven't seen any of the work, so I don't know.
They haven't done any work?
Well, that's probably why I haven't seen it. So I wouldn't want to knock them then before they haven't had an opportunity, if that's the case. So I'd like to see both hap, things happen simultaneously. So I am going to support the motion that came out of subcommittee, but I would also like to see it referred to the subcommittee, the idea of discussing a marketing plan for our school district.
I know we accepted the grant, and I'm trying to remember, I was trying to just kind of find it out. There wasn't any stipulations on the grant that it all go, in, you know, that we, it was, I believe it's in our discretion, Alex, that there are.
That's, that's probably accurate, but the proposal that was presented by over the Bridge was for one year's worth of video productions, approximately once a week, and so on and so forth, so that would be needed to take into account.
So, I, I agree with Joel that we should take this seriously, number one, and that we should be looking at it further out, but I also agree with Michelle that, you know, we already started, that this is not a huge amount of money, nor is, nor is it, in my mind, what, you know, what it would cost to get a higher up marketing consultant to come in and actually do anything other than tell us what he thought we should do. And then we'd have to go out and look for more money. So I'm going to support this, and, you know, but I don't think we should just let it drop and say, this is it, it's all done.
Has there been a scope of work put out? How is this defined for what he needs to do?
Through discussion and negotiations, $5,000 grants, it's not that we have to do procurement.
No, no, there's no drawing about what defines what he's supposed to do.
Yeah, well, as I just mentioned, he's going to, for the, for the year, whenever it starts, he's going to produce a video per week, or, but that doesn't tell me what is he producing, what target areas is he going to do, but, you know, one video per week does not tell me what the, his, the product is going to be like, and like, is there any, has there been any definition of, of a scope of work? Scope of work is not just one video, it's, it defines the project, and we have any definition to this project other than just a broad brush?
The, the information that was gleaned by me from, from discussions with superintendent was as well as some, I'm trying to think what else was there. Was that he would do just basically positive interviews with students and, and graduates about, you know, their experience at, at, in the lost school systems, and that they would be in the 32nd to minute range of time span. That was pretty much, and he would, he would then use social media to put it out, it would be just something really throw, you know, throw up once, it would be on, he would consciously be a career platform for these little videos to be accessed. Joel?
So I think I have to answer that question. In the April 24th letter from GF to Dr. Sapphire, they mentioned to Dr. Sapphire that previously the GF board had approved support for proposed district marketing program with the Bridge in the amount of $5,000, which GF will pay directly. And this is GF, it is set in the specifics of the contract with Dr. Sapphire as well. So we didn't accept a grant, we didn't approve anything, this is, this is just GF doing this in concert with Dr. Sapphire and.
It's great, right? It was great. So that kind of means we don't even have.
We don't even have to vote on it.
The only other thing I want to say is that my, you know, this sweets, I think this is a great first step. Unless we know what steps two, three, four, and five are, how can we judge whether it's the step in the right direction or not? I don't see the answer to that, but just think about that, you know, step two is, I didn't know step one is the right step.
Because you have a minute program.
Possibly part of the answer lies in the proposal, which I was not going to even press on to share, but I couldn't wrong, but the objective is to show the Gloucester Public Schools a prideful and positive light to Cape Ann and beyond, and to promote Gloucester Public Schools programs, faculty, students, and events, as well as celebrate its history and share current news and future endeavors. That is the objective. Our hope is also to link the work that he does, which he has described as 90-second spots, in many instances biographical, people who are celebrating their experience, past, present, what have you, with the Gloucester Schools, but to also link it with our publicists to create a conduit so that anything that, on the local level, meaning at the school level, we want to also coordinate that they're sending things to him. One of the advantages of this is, is his, his capacity for getting things out on social So it includes Bridge, annual Bridge membership for reduced video production costs, a weekly Facebook post, live broadcast or picture post to encourage viewer engagement, plus Facebook boosts, Facebook boosts occasional brainstorming sessions, research, et cetera. So, you know, we haven't, to, to fully answer your question, we haven't dug down further because we're waiting for a consensus where the majority agree and the rest can live with it, so that we can move forward, spend the summer, and really detail what has, he's already kind of wet our whistle as the kinds of things, and he's referred to some social media stuff, what was that thing, New York or something? I can't remember, but there are some models out there that he wanted to run past us to see if it makes sense, and, but we've installed, and we haven't really worked with him on that.
So I want to also point out that he, he is very open to, I think, suggestions along the way, or, as he said, content. I know when GF did its gala, he's, he was not like the reporter on the street, he was, he did all the filming and the editing, but it was all student voices, teacher voices, there was nothing Bridge related.
Who is he?
Who's he?
Corey, I'm sorry, the Bridge is Corey Cooper.
Bridge was that the one person?
He's got other people.
Okay.
I believe that, I don't know if they're.
Does Corey a member to Gloucester Ed Foundation?
No, not at all, not at all. But, so he did that for us, and I think he did it pro bono, working with a parent, to talk about the needs of the music rooms, which is what the big ask was, is how do we renovate this music room so that it would be an appropriate place for kids to learn band and chorus? And so even though it was probably, what, three minutes, four minutes? It was short, it was a short video, but it was all.
It was short.
Right.
Yeah, the video that he did for the gala of the 10th anniversary of the EF.
Right. But it was all.
He did that, that video.
Right.
And that's his relationship.
All his editing, not necessarily his interviewing, right? So he kind of got the gist of what the ask was, and captured those things, and had kids and the teacher basically do, do it along with some of his pictures and things.
I have a question. Will these be, the little videos or clips, or are they going to be approved by review first by the GF Foundation or you?
Us.
Before it gets posted?
Us.
Okay. And they have to be approved, correct?
I'm sorry?
They have to be approved by us, isn't it like, so like it's not sealed, you know?
By you, it's not us.
Right.
By you. But it's centralized.
Okay.
And those things.
Okay, so the motion was, I think we're just approving the.
Motion was going to, for continued support.
Continue this. What, I'm trying to remember. Rhea, can you tell me what, exactly what the motion was?
To approve ongoing public relation initiatives with the Bridge, Cape Ann, and parent volunteers with support from the Gloucester Education Foundation.
That's fine.
Can I just add one thing? The notion of a more systemic approach, a long-term approach, all makes perfect sense, but it's not as though there isn't an objective we have, aside from popularizing the school district in a positive light, hopefully, in all likelihood, we may face a vote probably by February of 2019, or 2020, rather, on an override. This material is not going to be directly related to anything political. At the same time, the extent to which it creates some, some wallpaper of positive press for the district, it hopefully will help add and contribute to a sense within the community that, or at least it'll be exposed to things that are happening in the district that are positive, and perhaps even subliminally will have a positive impact as we face that political challenge. But again, the work that's being done there will be independent of anything that is political with respect to moving a school project forward.
I, I think this is really important that we move forward with this. I think that in all my years on the, on the school committee, I don't know how many times I've heard people say, you know, you guys are doing such a great job, but it's too bad nobody knows this. Or, or on the other side of that is, well, oh, mainly it's awful. When I was there, which was 20 years ago, and they start, they haven't seen anything in their mind that has changed their experience. So I think just almost doing anything that, that is positive and reflective of what is actually happening has got to help, so I'm going to support this, but I'm not going to, I think we need to continue to think in the long term and more strategically about, but this will be a good sort of experiments to see if it does work. You know, I mean, you can take first steps when you don't know what the second step's going to be, you know? Any further discussion? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Passes our five to one.
Second.
That's the end of our report. And we're just walking along here into, into our action items. And we have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a number of grants. We have two grants from the Gloucester Education Foundation, a $210 transportation cost for a student in Helen Duncan's Clayworks II class at GHS to attempt State of Clay exhibit at the Parsons Gallery in Lexington, Mass.
So move.
Second.
Twenty to no to get to our.
It's an expensive town.
Is there any discussion?
It's the best one, aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three hundred dollars to Ed. Bailey Donnelly for mainly career initiative.
I saw more.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? D E S E grant, state continuation administered by the Office of Student and Family Support in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion? It is.
This number's going, no, I know, but what is it?
It is, it.
It's.
The question.
It's not, you.
Yeah, it is, it's in here.
So I'm thinking.
Henry Jordan's grant.
I.
It's. I know, it was on his school.
Right, you're on it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
E C L C, yeah.
No, it's twenty-five thousand.
It's teen dating violence.
Yeah.
Empty teen dating.
Henry Jordan, uh, for the grant request officially for five thousand dollars. Just he found that they had more funding and increased it to ten thousand, and that's the support of the teen dating. It says here, I think it's a focus of the grant, that the Gloucester High School provides staff training on effective threat assessment strategies and development of school-wide safety planning and develop a comprehensive, responsible program that supports the identified student and ensures safety on school grounds. And it's partnering, partnering with the Center for Prime Social Innovation Training Technical Systems.
You missed the one before, the twenty-five grand.
Can I just ask that when that is all said and done, that we get a report on that from her at some point?
Absolutely.
We can go see the year ago.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We'll go back to number two, the Center for Collaborative Education Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Does most of us go to statements to attend these things or?
Yeah, I gave a brief overview before, but did I not?
Yeah.
It's a great opportunity, it's a six district collaborative, Danvers, Gloucester, Rockford, Spomsgut, Haverhill, and Beverly. It's funded by the Tower Foundation. And just had a meeting last night, I think, yeah, last night. And it is, it pays money for teams from each district to come together to meet at Edith College to plan three initiatives that all districts will pool resources together on. It's a team of six, it's a lead team from the district, and then a team of nine teachers who are, three of each are in the subgroups on the specific topics. So it pays for us to travel and meet for the next six months, and the end product is a district and school improvement plan around these three areas, social, emotional learning, R T I and tier-one academic sports, and also cultural, culturally appropriate instruction. It's just a fantastic opportunity, and we understand that out of it will become the opportunity to apply for a much larger implementation grant from the Tower Foundation. So it's primarily stipends for teachers for that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a grant, the value of which is seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents from Self Signaling. There's cash and materials involved in this, and I believe this is going to a mailing?
No, high school.
High school.
Chemistry, well, sponsored by what are the countries? Nice ol'.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say Self Signaling is such a generous corporation and a, you know, it sounds like a cell phone company, but they're really very scientific. And this is yet, yet again, another grant from them, they're very supportive of education, which is great.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. That is it for the grants. We'll move on to, we're not going to do the free library because it's going to the school. The approval, the AsmeA ratified contract, we've been, we previously met in executive session and voted to approve this, and we just have to do it in public, so the motion.
I believe that we approve the AsmeA ratified contract right here.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to ask Dr. Sapphire, do you have the signed M O U or M O A?
AsmeA?
Yeah.
I'll have to look.
Because I don't want to, I got a call from Carol yesterday.
Oh, I don't know that she sent it back.
Yeah, well, we shouldn't be approving it then, to an extent, because we don't have an agreement.
No, I don't approve also, that's right, because we changed the language.
But she did tell me that they ratified it, and I was concerned about that vacation language that we had discussed. It's my understanding they ratified it and.
I sent you an email asking for it. Yeah, maybe we had a talk, I still have to proceed.
Yeah, I called you yesterday, but I couldn't get in touch with you.
Table?
Well, I don't want to table it because we want to process it for payment, but we don't have a signed agreement, so.
No, this is, we don't have to worry about that, this is for next year.
No.
Oh, so this passed?
No, it is for next year.
What is?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was for last year.
AsmeA.
Effective July one, twenty-seventeen.
You're right, you're right, this one is, AsmeB is next year. So I would say that we approve it, subject to the M O A signature to be received. Carol actually called me and asked me if we're all set, and I said yes, because it was my understanding you had it. But if you're saying we don't have it, then we just would need to get that tomorrow. I think the last year was June twenty-second or something like that. But I wouldn't want to stall or prevent retroactive pay. So if we can add, subject to the signed M O A, to the motion, or I'll make a motion, amend the motion, to add the language, subject to the signed M O A agreement.
All right, so we need to make an.
I amended the motion.
Amendment to the motion, or you made the motion, right?
Do you want a second? The amended motion.
Trying to figure out what we're going to.
The motion? No, you don't have a second on my amendment. I moved to amend the motion to add, subject to, be signed M O A.
Second.
So do we have any discussion on the amendment? So, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now back to the motion as amended, which is to ratify, which is to approve the contract for AsmeA. Is there any?
You said this was, this was voted in executive session of the entire committee? What date was that?
The last meeting I was at.
It was, I'm going to say that it was May ninth?
Was it in May?
No, it was.
Yeah, that's right.
I think it was right before, it was that meeting before that.
Okay.
April the third?
It's okay.
We did have an executive session and we did.
That's the opposite.
Yeah, we did.
It was a long time.
But it was May twenty-third.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we did do, we did have a meeting May twenty-third.
It was end of April.
No, it was April twenty-third.
The end of April.
We did with AsmeA on May seventh.
Were there no hearings on it?
We what?
There was no meeting on the twenty-third.
No, we had, we had with AsmeA on the.
That's right, we did. We did it the night of the public hearing.
Yeah, that was.
Oh, the public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
We did it, which was.
The public hearing, she was there.
That was the last meeting that I, a couple of weeks ago. No, we did.
We did, I know we did.
We did, because we said, subject to the vacation language, because we added that afterwards.
I don't have an executive session for the public hearing, and it's not a matter.
We had a, we had a discussion in executive session.
Well, we couldn't have it on April fourth because we didn't talk with AsmeA until May seventh. That's right on my calendar. Unless we talked with them before May seventh, but I don't see it on another week. We talked with them on March fifth. And then May seventh. Did you see it on your calendar, meeting with them on May seventh?
We met with them on April second.
No. AsmeA? I don't have it on April second.
And then we met with them on May seventh.
Yep.
There was no executive session on May ninth.
Okay.
It was May sixteen.
May sixteen. May sixteen, special school committee meeting.
That was it, and then I got home.
Yes, there we go.
I know we did too, because I was saying, they were ratifying the next day.
You're good, Tony, you're fine.
Okay, so we do.
Oh, but thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
May sixteen.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It carries five to one.
It's money we already have, isn't it, yeah?
Okay. We already voted the policy. That's it for action. M S B A update, we met Monday and concluded our pick of a, a, oldest project firm to be the oldest project manager for the Scotts project. And we, the way it works is you rank them one, two. We had four finalists, we ranked them one, two, and three. The process is that they will enter into negotiations with our first pick. Can I say?
I'm sorry.
We haven't, we haven't come to an agreement with them. Can I, can I give the names of the firms?
Were they all in?
They're in negotiations right now.
Just the fact that they applied is.
Are they in negotiations?
Well, I assume they are. It's, we picked them and it's subject to them coming to terms with an agreement.
So the meeting that you picked them at and waited them, it was in public, so it's public agreement.
So the number one pick was C B R E Harry.
Harry?
Hearing.
H E R Y.
They were the oldest project manager for Beverly and Newport. Their recent projects there. The second pick was Hill International, and they have done a number of, I think, three elementary schools of their degree, as one of them was new construction in there. They built the Native High School and a number of other things. And it, and the fourth pick was.
It was third.
Westfield.
Fourth, yeah, Westfield was fourth. C M S, which is the firm that Kevin Melville is associated with. But there's every expectation they'll come to terms with the first pick. The process is that we have to have our information, they have to come to terms, and we have to have our information into M S, sending to M S B A by the eighteenth.
At June?
Yeah, which is hard, right? So that they can review everything and get it on the board meeting for July fifteenth, sixteen. So that's how much time, so we, once we have a, an oldest project manager under contract on board, which won't be till after July sixteen, we will resume, hold in committee meetings. Anything else on M S B A? There's, there's paperwork that's been brought forward to close out West Parish, and it was presented to me to sign, and I said I wouldn't sign it until we had a meeting, and I got a report forward from the oldest project manager and us, and so that is in the works, and we're going to schedule that. Probably not to the schools or.
Did you ever find out if any money could be used to upgrade the parking issue at West Parish?
Well, that's one of the reasons why I'm at this meeting, but it could, I mean, it could be, but we wouldn't get reimbursed for it, so it isn't any different than any other money you borrow.
Wasn't there a contingency element?
Still to borrow it.
Well, you know, it's. That's.
Sorry, borrowed.
Well, they don't borrow it. They approve to borrow it, but they don't actually borrow it until they actually have to make payments. So it is not like it's.
It's a lot of, why?
Approval is a symbol.
So why, how do you come to the conclusion that it's not reimbursable, if anybody asked? I mean, you know.
Well, site work in general is not reimbursable. We've already gone, it's reimbursable at to nine percent of the total project, and we've already eclipsed that. So if we, if we maxed out what we can, what they will reimburse on the site work.
So that's considered site work and not necessarily.
That's how stated.
Driveway, yeah. I'm pretty sure it is.
Is it required to have, or we have the minimum parking spots already?
It is. We have what the city signed off on parking spots. Anything else on M S B A? The roof is, there's.
Rooftop units are in?
They're in, and they've got to recult them on site, or they have reculted them on.
I believe that that's been completed.
Is this the high school roof?
High school roof.
Good question. Are there any seagulls up there? Well, we used the lighter material, and I'm curious, because we did this at the courthouse, we don't have seagulls anymore, so I'm curious to know if they're down there.
I'll be over there tomorrow.
Will you check it out? I'm curious to know.
We'll require some research.
If you go on the roof with me, I'll take you.
Okay. I won't be here, I'll leave enough in the morning to go to Virginia.
Okay. Is there any other questions about M S B A? All right, there's a letter in a packet from Bill Melvin, who is, was made aware of some of the comments made by the chair of the city council, B N F, regarding athletics at our hearing, our presentation, and chose to write a letter to the city council and to not pack it.
I would like to refer to B N F the discussion, because one of the points he brought up was the condition of the track. It's been.
What'd you say?
Track, good.
I'm sorry, the field house.
Field house.
The field house, that's what I mean, the field house, the track in the field house, and probably the whole field house. And I think, given that. Um, and I think, um, given that the city wants direction from us as to our needs, this is certainly one we should probably make formal, um, at least discuss, and we want to make it formal because it's, kind of, it's a big safety issue, and I was mentioning it in the field, with our program. So, I'd like to refer to B and F.
And if that is also, um, directly linked to the arbitration issue, they, of course, have a whole host of things, most of which have been reconciled, but the fact that there has been no movement on the, uh, fieldhouse track remains a valid contention for the, uh, GTA as well, so there's that aspect to it.
All right, uh, so is there any, um, other new business or old business that anybody would like to bring up?
Um, so as we head into the summer and hopefully some of the, you know, resources open up, um, I would like the school committee to, um, or either request, I don't know how worth of probably, I'd like to find out whether or not the administration or the school committee, somebody can think about, um, we have these modulators coming up that are going to do replacement. Is there a way to avoid, is there a way to take them offline without replacing them or going replacing a lesser number by redistricting among the elementary schools and evening out numbers so that we don't need to replace every single module that comes offline? Um, we figure out a plan to be put together for that. Um, the second is to renew attempts at starting a conversation up with, um, Rockport toward regional consolidation. Um, I think it'd be good for the...
I, I contacted them last week and, uh, they haven't responded.
Sure. So, I, I think it would be, um...
I think I might just show them up.
Thanks. So, it's a picture?
For communication's sake.
This is all our empty lockers, you want some?
The latter response is a response.
Yeah. Well, so, this leads into, I think it would be good for, what I'm, um, because I'm interacting with students at the high school, um, what I'm hearing right now, they're just going to finish course selection, and I think it'd be good if, uh, we can get a brief report, um, from the high school as to, as we do to reduce staff, you know, appropriately so for financial reasons, what it's doing to availability of courses. So, for instance, the anecdote I have is a bunch of students, rising juniors, wanted to take, um, AP Chemistry and AP English. If you take those two, you can't take a history class unless you drop in a CP and that filled up immediately. So, a bunch of juniors are going to have to miss out on the history class for a year to take it, their senior year, because there isn't a honors history that doesn't conflict with AP English and AP Cap. And so, and it, it sounds like that, it was, maybe it was college prep, it was fault. And so, that, a, a lot of the students, the rising juniors were talking about this, and I bet there's other examples, and again, it's probably unavoidable, but it'd be good for us to hear how many conflicts are being created as we offer fewer and fewer, um, sessions of certain courses. And, uh, obviously the marketing we discussed earlier tonight, it'd be great to get that discussion moving. And last, um, we should probably, um, make a decision or, or, I'd like to be outlined as what we're going to do about the preschool decision process, and, you know, I understand that there may be renewed studies happening, but it was articulated us that we need to articulate to the city what we want to do with the preschool, and we can't make a decision unless we have information, so let's make sure that we're actively acquiring or setting up to acquire information we need in order to make a decision soon enough. And that's my summary of the list.
Okay. I love it.
I have to...
Summary, yes.
Um, I don't know if this would go to finance or program, but we, I'd like to have it referred that we look at who in the district has the ability to write grants, who is writing grants, and how that works, because I know we don't have a grant writer. Um, for instance, there's tons of vocational grants out there right now, who's going to be looking and observing those grants and hopefully trying to capture some of them, and I know there's other topics, too. But I'm curious to who is responsible, if anybody, or how grant writing happens in this district? Is it just teachers taking it on themselves? Do they have to get permission? Is there a conversation that invokes somebody to apply for a grant? I'm curious, um, maybe a, a report to the full committee or something. I would just like to know, um, how grants get applied for and by whom and when and what that whole process is, since we do not have a dedicated grant writer.
If you have, um, links, you mentioned that there are available grants for vocational program. If you, if you're aware of where those links are located, you can, uh, help us with that. That would be, that would be good.
So, I just give you a link.
So, yeah, that's right, give us a link.
But I'm curious to know what the district does.
We will provide you with what you've asked for. In addition, you mentioned that there are grants out there that may be available, and if you know of them, please provide us with a link.
Okay. Well, we're looking to hear what the other side was of your district does.
Anything else?
Um, West Parish issue becoming a hot topic again. A couple of weeks ago, I got a call from Counselor Sean Nolan, who had been speaking with the administration, and there was some messaging that the one-way street got approved. Um, however, I don't know if it's in effect, but there are members asking, um, did we hire or assign a crossing guard to implement anything that's supposed to be going on over there or needs to go on over there? So, I would just like to know what the status is of West Parish. Apparently, there's still cars and teachers and children crossing one, Route 133, and there's some parents that are horrified seeing what's happening. However, when I inquire to the administration, I'm hearing everything's fine over there, but when you go on social media, you're seeing pictures of something else. So, um, I said I would inquire tonight to get a report at whatever meeting you feel necessary, because I know you have to look into it, um, and there's not enough time to change for next week, the last week of school, however, I don't want to start the new year with these questions still lingering. In other words, if we have to hire another crossing guard, send it to finance to find in the budget, um, what is the plan for next year, because what is going on now is not working. And there's too many people asking, but yet nothing seems to be happening. There's no specific action being taken, other than the fact that, I guess, the request to make it one-way was allowed, but yet it hasn't been implemented or something, and signs aren't out or whatever, I don't know, I just think the committee needs a report prior to school starting to be active to keep our children safe at that school before the start of school next year.
What we, there have been a, a number of meetings, um, where we've had, um, discussions about permanence, um, and we're exploring that with Mike Hale and, uh, right now. And they essentially are going to involve, or what's been suggested is adding parking by losing part of the field, by taking, um, moving the backstop to the left a little bit, putting a road out to the right corner of the field and putting a loop around, so that would increase the queue area, um, for people to do it. But ultimately, the, um, the problems, um, are people parking illegally, and that is not something that we're in position to enforce. I mean, we're not going to send teachers out there to tell people they can't park, um, on a public street, um, or aides or, or crossing guards. So, there's, um, that has to be resolved. It's not our job to prevent people from parking illegally on that other streets anymore than it is in any other street, so...
Okay, so with that being said, it's somebody's job, and if the school committee has to take a position, which I hope we would and do soon, to find out who it is to enforce and why it's not being enforced, and what steps are going to be taken so that the law is enforced next year, as opposed to waiting until a child gets hurt, and then we all say this, because that's what we're doing right now, and that needs to stop. Children's safety, are we risk crossing that street? If it's a state highway, do we call the state police? Is it a Gloucester Road? Do we call Gloucester Police? What needs to be done to enforce parents from parking illegally on that road so that nobody gets hurt?
Are these kids crossing the street by themselves?
Doesn't matter, they're not supposed to park there. It's illegal to park there.
Parents parking illegally.
And people are speeding by there, and the speeding isn't being enforced. So, you've got parking not being enforced and speeding not being enforced. That's an accident waiting to happen, I don't want to wait till it happens. We need to be proactive in our conversations. If we can enforce it, who does, and let's get it enforced? Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. So, most of you go into executive session for the purpose of, um, discussing, um, the contracts with our bus monitors, new supervisors, and crossing guards.
And we will not come out.
And we will, we're going to approve these afterwards. We're going to vote on it.
Yes.
So, we will, um, be coming out of executive session, um, and we will then, um, take a vote on if we come to an agreement, uh, on, on those contracts, and then we will adjourn. So, um, do we have a most people in executive session?
So, say again?
Uh, roll call vote?
Roll. Debbie Clancy, yes. Mr. Pomosa?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Cameron Boe?
Yes.
This week.
Yes.
Ms. Sipso?
Yes.
Okay, so we will take a five-minute recess, David, we're just going to come out. Thank you, sir.